...when you were in the call.
All right, so pugilism, pugilism, hold on a sec.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the meeting at seven. Welcome, everyone. Any public comments? Do we have any public comments? Any public comments?
Dorso.
We have any public?
Closing public comments.
Crickets, that's right. You need crickets.
Item number four, approved minutes from November 5th, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Al, second by Karen. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
No, Len's abstention. Chair votes aye, motion passes four zero one. There is item number five, there's no first selectmen's report. I'd like to make a motion to add the agenda and add to the agenda the discussion and possible action regarding the 2015 steep application.
Hi. Hello. Oh.
Thank you. Sorry. One more time. I'd like to add to the agenda discussion and possible action regarding the 2015 steep application.
Second.
Motion by Len, second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. I'll read the resolution. Whereas pursuant to CGS four dash sixty-six G, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects and whereas is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Seymour, Connecticut make an application to the state for $200,000 in order to undertake the steep town of Seymour sidewalk replacement project phase five and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen, one, that is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by CGS four dash sixty-six G, number two, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the town of Seymour and the amount not to exceed $200,000 is hereby approved and that W Kurt Miller, first selectman, is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Seymour, Connecticut.
Motion to accept the resolution?
Motion by Paul, second by Len. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Item number six, discussion and take possible action on Seymour Fire Department's surplus equipment request. Yeah? I'd like more information on that. The chief was supposed to be here.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
I've heard so many different things from so many different, on both sides, I'd like more information on this.
I'm not opposed to that only because the chief was supposed to be here, right? He was supposed to be here, so.
The chief was supposed to be here.
So do we have to make a motion?
Perhaps a motion to table an order for chief show looking to take it off the table.
Okay. Okay. Make a motion to table the Seymour Fire Department's surplus equipment, a postponed equipment request. Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Len, sorry. Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Item number seven, discussion and take possible action on FFY 2014 State Homeland Security Grant Program Region Two Memorandum of Agreement. Okay. Town of Seymour authorizing resolution of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Seymour, resolve that the Board of Selectmen may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut division of emergency management and homeland security, Department of Emergency Services, and Public Protection any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that W Kurt Miller, as first selectman of the town of Seymour, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution stated? Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Executive session, we have no executive session. Appoint, appointment. Appointments. Paul Roy, Seymour Athletic, Seymour High School Athletic Fields Committee alternate. Appointment term until completion, expiration date, there's none. Do you have a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Len, second by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero one. Note the exception by Paul. Second, Mary Rayer, Board Culture and Arts, reappointment for three years, expiration date twelve to seventeen.
Some move.
Motion by Karen, second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Andrew Ven, Daddy, thank you, Junior, Downtown Committee, it's a reappointment for one year, expires twelve twenty fifteen. Do you have a motion? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Frankie Casanova, MSOC, reappointment, two years, expiration twelve twenty two thousand sixteen. Do you have a motion? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Len. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Brenda A White, Housing Authority, reappointment, four years, expiration twelve thirty two thousand, oh, sorry, go back. Rebecca Golbieski, Housing Authority, reappointment, four years, expiration eleven thirty eighteen.
Some move.
Motion by Len, second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Now, Brenda A White, Housing Authority, reappointment, four years, expiration eleven thirty two thousand eighteen. Do you have a motion? Motion by Len, second by Al. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Jeff, anybody here? Honey? Do, thank you. Jeff Duschenleger, Valley Health Board, Valley Health District Board, reappointment, three years, eleven eighteen, two thousand seventeen. Do you have a motion? Motion by Len, second by Anne Marie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Okay, tax refund and abatement?
The following overpayment of tax payments in total one thousand ninety dollars and thirty cents need to be approved for refund in accordance with provision of section twelve dash one to nine Connecticut general statutes dated at Seymour, the twelfth day of November two thousand and fourteen. Signed Dana Black, Tax Office.
Some move.
Motion by Karen, second by Len. Anybody have any conflicts? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Item eleven, we have no, no transfers. Item twelve, correspondence, we have the check register. We have a few items for correspondence. We have attorney, patrolers, answer, who's, for the blight fines, so you'll find that. We have a letter from Len, Len Junior, his resignation, and we have a.
From the Seymour local community.
Yes. Everybody get that? And then we have a member, we have a letter to the Board of Selectmen from the Board of Public Works. And last.
Are we allowed to comment on any of this, or should we just take the, usually we don't comment on letters, just we just take them.
And then the last one, we have a letter from a resident of Mount Burrow.
Do you know if this letter has been referred to Public Works?
I do not know. Roy.
The letter, uh, no, the one from Beverly Casey.
About Hill Street. Hill Street.
Oh, plowing and maintenance of the road and all that stuff. From Mrs. Casey. Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of talk today.
We're gonna, we're gonna follow up, and we already did. Yeah, 'cause we should.
Okay.
Okay, that's not fun.
Thanks.
Item thirteen, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Maybe someone hiding, any public comment? No public, um, spoken public comment.
Wait, Alana had something.
Oh, you got something?
Happy birthday, Uncle Nicole.
Uh, thank you. All right, thank you. Love that kid.
Item number fourteen, selectmen's public comment. Karen?
You know, I really thought about asking somebody else to go first tonight. I really did, but no, no, it's okay, it's okay. I picked up my agenda this mor, this afternoon. Rory was kind enough to print it out for me, as he always does, and I got this, the letter from Rich, from town council. And I read it, and I read it again, and I read it again, and I didn't do any research. He, I'm not an attorney, although I do have some legal training, and I don't understand the ruling. I really don't.
If I may, as a part of the, what is it, assist, the, the ruling's pretty straightforward. The ordinance does not allow the blight officer to waive any fine after the, after they started crowing after fourteen days.
I understand that part.
So that, that part is, I thought that was the question. He has no authority to do that. The Board of Selectmen has the authority to do that, however, after, after a hearing or clause. On the other hand, I did notice one little thing in the ordinance, and I noted that in the last paragraph in the letter, and that is, he doesn't have to give the notice, that he does have a lot of discretion as to when he gives the notice of violation. The ordinance actually says he gives it when required. So.
So.
So, in other words, let me just, it's, well, that part of it, so in other words, once he give, once he gives it, the fines start accruing. They just accrue. They start accruing and they'll accrue until and unless this board or, well, let me jump back a second. They will continue to accrue, the only one that can waive them is this board, not the, not the blight officer.
In whole or in part?
Yes. In whole or in part. Now, where he has discretion is giving the notice of violation.
I, I understand that.
And if he doesn't give the notice of violation, then the fines don't begin to accrue.
You have to give the official notice. That's the homeowner that they've done blight. It's a notice.
Yes, and then they have fourteen days and they would like to appeal and everything else falls into play.
And let me just ask, I think I know the answer to this question. If he does blight a property and the fine starts accruing, what if it's not paid?
Well, I can tell you because we've actually, yeah, we record a lien, and that lien, under Connecticut state law, we believe, after a certain date of mortem, so let's just assume with a new lien that we put on today, that lien, we will claim priority. Priority, same priority as past, and we will commence a foreclosure.
But that ends up costing the town more than it costs the property owner.
Well, actually, it may not.
May not, that's right.
It may not, because the attorney's fees, first of all, you're in a first position. Think about what I just said, you are now in a first position. So you're foreclosing, and we have one foreclosure pending right now on behalf of the town of Seymour, on the way to destruction, where we're claiming priority over the bank, the bank that was foreclosing.
The which, other than the IRS being the first to.
Yeah, and even over the IRS.
Really?
Most instances.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, the IRS, if there's an IRS lien recorded, what it does is, that requires a sale or a strict foreclosure, but it doesn't necessarily alter the priorities at all. So, forget dischargeability issues in banks, forget that. We would have a priority, we would foreclose, just like you would a tax lien, but what happens to the attorney's fees? What happens to the appraisal fees? What happens to the search fees? Do you know that?
I know.
They all get tacked on, and they're charged, and two things are gonna happen, two things are gonna happen. Either the town is gonna take back the property, somebody's gonna bid, be it the property owner, or the big bank, or someone else in the choir. So, it, it, the overwhelming odds are, in the end, it won't cost them. It's the opposite. When we did a program very similar to this, I think we were one of the first ones around, when the first blight ordinance is around, we used in an aggressive fashion in the city of Derby during late, this period, almost in this period, that we were a corporation company. We acquired on behalf of the city of Derby, blighted properties all over the city of Derby, which were then, city, the program that that Board of Alderman and that mayor, the program, the policy decision they made was to take back those blighted structures and to then take them down, demolish them, and that's what they were doing in various parts of the city where there wasn't great of a blight that could against the public conditions to handle. And in other instances, they used them to, to liberate properties for economic development to, to abandon the property.
Would your advice be to revisit the blight ordinance to tighten it up? Is that possible?
Why don't we work with the foreword? You're still getting, you know, work with it for a bit, and let's see where the bugs are, if they are, let's see how it works, because it's relatively new in terms of, in adoption, in terms of its use by Seymour. So let's see where it goes a little bit, so we can then maybe make some recommendations. And you'll have thoughts, too. I mean, you know, the ward, and maybe the blight officer might have some thoughts about some recommendations, but we haven't even used it for a year.
I understand that, and the other thing I wanted to say was, you know, I, I had a conversation with Kurt, and I asked him about the concrete basement structure of Seymour lumber. And his remark to me was that the state is afraid that it might have an impact on Route sixty-seven if we require that to be torn out. And I have a question about that.
I am not a person.
You're not a structural engineer?
Don't lawyers know everything? I'm married to one.
My wife would give you, my wife would give you the opposite answer, Karen.
Sorry, Al. I'm set, thank you, thank you.
Oh, I'm good.
I'm all set. Len?
I'm in there.
This would be the fastest man.
Exposed?
Yes.
Oh. So I have.
We can go back.
We can go back.
If there's someone to sit, make him up to take it off the table.
I move, we'll take it off the table.
Karen makes a motion to take it off the table for discussion, the Seymour Fire Department's surplus equipment request, do I have a second? Second by Anne Marie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Okay.
I'm sorry, I was, the committee was at seven thirty, not seven o'clock, so I was running a little bit late. I don't have enough packets for you, I'll be as brief as possible. Share, we're not actually gonna go through the whole thing, I don't wanna scare you guys. And, no, my name's John Horn, the chief of the Seymour Fire Department. What we're here tonight for is, we have two engines, mini pumpers, as you see on the first page of that document. Engine ten and engine eighteen are thirty-five-year-old vehicles, used primarily for water supply and brush fire supply, they've outlived their usefulness. We've identified in this packet a viable replacement, at least in smaller commercial vehicles. I've met with Kurt, and we've identified some funding sources. Our steps here tonight, the Board of Fire Chiefs, Board of Fire Commissioners, are also voting to surplus these vehicles. Our step here tonight is to ask you guys to do the same, is to vote to surplus and allow me to sell these vehicles on the open market. Typically, surplus equipment in a town is offered up to other agencies that might find use for it. This is a little difficult with fire apparatus, as most other agencies don't have a need for it. We do believe that these vehicles have some value between five and eight thousand dollars that we let get on the open market floor, but I'm not gonna know that until we sell them to you. We'd like to move forward with this before we go into a leasing option to replace them. And our goal is to replace one this year and one in the next one year.
Do we have any questions?
I would like to review this information at first, and then before you can pay bucks on it, if any of our other emergency engines in the world want it or do need it, but I wanna review this package before I vote to surplus them.
Have you discussed that with anybody, any of the other departments that they need of them?
Not any of the departments directly. I mean, these are, these are public trucks, they're of very little use, they're not, they're not cloud trucks, they're not dump trucks, they're not stop truck drivers, so I don't see much of the use for them in any place, public fire department. And certainly that comes into play, if we cannot sell these vehicles outright and generate some funding, then I'll have to be back here asking for an increase in our line item to purchase new vehicles without a funding source. We're trying to be as frugal as possible here by selling these where we can, where we can generate some revenue, as opposed to basically just throwing them away. We looked into a trade-in option with the dealers, and they were only offering a scrap value of about seven hundred fixed to a thousand dollars a piece, and I feel that was appropriate to the dealers.
So these, I'm, these specifically are servicing Great Hill.
No, one is at Great Hill, and one is next door here in Settles.
And this would be, I, I live on North Benham Road, so this would bring water to my house.
It hasn't been used to do that in almost twenty years. It was bought with that intention thirty-five years ago. That truck specifically that you're looking at was used to go into a pond and pump water from a water source like a pond. That truck is severely underpowered compared to today's fire apparatus, and it couldn't possibly leak that need anymore.
How's it been taken out of service?
Truck's broke out of service.
And is it keeping that on record?
Engine ten was taken out of service almost a year ago under the Board of Fire Chiefs and Fire Commission, and it should be in our minutes, and engine eighteen was taken out of service two months ago by the commission chiefs.
I would too, but to selfishly ask a question, if I had a fire at twenty-two North Benham Road, would you be pumping water out of Bobby Rich's lake?
Yes, but not with that truck.
So what were you, you may have said, what were you using them for now?
At this point, they've been used very little. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe that truck has gone for less than three calls this year, and probably a similar number last year, and most of those packages that goes up there comes back on a record.
And before, before, say, last year, what were you, same thing, were you using them in frequent?
Probably they've both been, they've both been used to transport equipment for brush fires. Back in the day, twenty years ago, these trucks would be able to go off-road. We've developed most of the land in Seymour, so the needs for apparatus to go off-road hasn't been there for years, and fires we have, we can reach the larger apparatus and hose lines and things like that, so these are just, they no longer fit the mission of the Seymour Fire Department. And to replace them, as is, we're looking at almost three hundred thousand dollars surplus in apparatus, to replace it with an equipment truck, and we just feel that the need is not there.
Chief, in terms of the timeline, you know, if we decided to take a couple of weeks and at our next meeting take some action, would that affect your plans detrimentally?
Not at all. I mean, we're moving slowly with this, and we're just trying to do what's right, so if we have to take a couple of weeks to let you guys first over, my goal is just to get them out on the open market. I can't even guarantee that I'm gonna sell them. I mean, they're used parts, I can't guarantee that they're not gonna sit on the market on the internet for a year. I did have some interest from the state of Hawaii, and their budget period doesn't open until March, and if I can get them out to Hawaii, I would do that, too.
I keep doing just like a couple of weeks.
When you take them to Hawaii, can I go with you?
I'm gonna sell them.
But honestly, we have to, we have to look at it and maybe in order for us to make the right decision.
In terms of, you mentioned, originally it was an off-road type vehicle, and granted it wasn't seen by, we do have some areas that would require off-road vehicles to fight fire, you know, behind my house, and the little line, and the little, the park back there, I assume that we already, we have something in place that would actually take its place.
Most of that, most of that area has never been developed enough for us to drive a vehicle off-road. These vehicles could get into a field when we had several larger farms up on, we had dairy farms up on Smoke Wrap, we could get into a field going between Pearl Street and Silver Mine Road, we could get into fields. We do have a gator at our disposal to go into the woods and do stuff with, we haven't had to do that in many, many years. We also have quite a bit of hose, and we can stretch hose into a woods, into the woods. We just simply don't have grassy land requiring off-road firefighting, plus we do have brush trucks available from our mutual aid partners, Oxford, we can cause a little bit of really little need for that.
Well, I was thinking, in terms of what you're looking to replace with, does that serve some?
Not really. The, the mission for the vehicle we hope to replace it with is more of a utility-type truck, basically having a generator, having pumps, it will carry some brush fire equipment with no water, it'll carry the equipment to the scene, be supported by a larger truck. Would also be used for pumping out basements, dealing with down-wire emergencies, CO calls. A lot of the stuff we've seen in our storms, in our hurricanes, in our floods, and things like that, we're putting a half a million dollar piece of apparatus in front of somebody's house to pump out their basement, realistically, I could do that with a fifty thousand dollar pickup truck and two guys. And, and, you know, we're wearing our large apparatus, we need something small to handle our everyday missions, something that can be repaired if you deal down the street as opposed to the times.
Any other questions?
I have one other question. I mean, we have areas in Seymour that don't have fire hydrants, and do we have the capability of bringing water in to fight a fire?
Absolutely, absolutely. We have, we have eight large, I'm sorry, we have four large Class A pumpers and one tanker. We have over nine thousand feet of large diameter hose, and we can move quite a bit of water from a nearest hydrant to the end of that nine thousand feet of hose. We also have mutual aid, we just ran a very large water supply drill up in, up in your neighborhood on Collins Road, where we moved over eighty-two thousand gallons of water in about a two-hour period, using ten tanker trucks from Bethany, Peter Falls, Woodbridge, Monroe, Stevenson, and Oxford, and that would be a small component of an actual fireplace. So we can move, we can move water. Now, I'd love to say that someday we're gonna install hydrants in some of those areas, and someday I may be standing there asking for that, that is certainly the gold standard, but we do have the ability to move, to move water. We're facing an urgent cleanup and lansh right now, and just, we're gonna have to start thinking about replacing this, and if we don't start with these two trucks, which are our oldest, at thirty-five and thirty-six respectively, we're just gonna be behind the curve. In two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget year, our first Class A bumper is going to become twenty years old. And if. NFA doesn't recommend any frontline apparatus being older than ten, reserve up to twenty, nothing older than thirty. So we're looking at probably two million dollars of apparatus costs, starting in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, when we start turning over.
You answered my next question, anyway.
Any more questions? All right, so does the board feel, we feel comfortable about ta, postponing this into our next meeting, which is, what's the date, Rory? December second? Yes?
I may have one of my assistants here, I'll be with Scott.
Okay, that's fine.
If somebody here has any questions, send, uh, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, make a motion for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Like, who made a motion, sorry. Second by Anne Marie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Thanks, Chief. Make a motion here.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Karen, to adjourn our meeting at seven thirty-one.